Call the meeting in order, Lisa.
As required by the public meetings act in nineteen seventy five adequate notice this meeting was provided on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty one by providing notice the express times and star ledger and posting a notice at the municipal building on the same date. Mayor Barsman.
Here.
Mister Baylor.
Here.
Mister Beam.
Here.
Mister Mercado.
Here.
Miss McDermott, actually don't see Lillian, did you guys see her?
She's coming in right now.
Okay, oh, she just text me. Okay.
Okay, I think I'll go all about it, or let's move the emergency repair to municipal building up to number one. John Moon, you're on, right?
Yes, I am, sure.
Okay, I think I think what we're what we're thinking about doing it is we got the eighty thousand dollars from sale of property on Washington Street. And we have an emergency repair we have to do to the municipal building septic system, it's backing up and the DPW supervisor. We were gonna devote that money for that purpose anyway for this year. So.
Okay.
We'd like to authorize Joe to start the repair next week again, so what do we need to do to facilitate that?
Uh, well, when your when your new CFO comes aboard, we can do an emergency, a budget emergency. And you would have to update your temporary budget for the capital item. Uh, because it's an emergency and you haven't done your budget yet, I'm gonna have to do just a little bit of research, but there's no reason why. You can't do it, I mean, you have to get it done, has to be done. So if you if you have a number in mind, if you say it's eighty thousand. I have sale of asset money on the balance sheet that amounts to eighty nine thousand, so we would have to bring that into the budget. I gotta get you an answer, I don't just because the timing is you don't have your budgets that I have to see how we would work an emergency through this early in the year.
We had, can we have Joe start on that on Monday already and then?
Yeah, if it's emergent, you have to, I mean, you can't wait around for that, that's gotta do it.
Okay.
But if if Joe's on, the initial, we talked about this yesterday, the initial search for the problem isn't going to be a big budget buster or anything else like that. He's he, we've got to look at the distribution box and see what's going on from there. So it's not like you're gonna need to even contemplate all of that initially right on. Um, but Joe can start on that the first part of the week. You know, it's not something that dollars for dollars, it's gonna be already in the budget if it's not big at that point. You know, under his DPW or building and ground for at least to get it off the ground while we figure out how much it is or isn't gonna cost and where the money's coming from.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Time you need to research it, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
You usually with an emergency, you know, if you're if you're already into your budget year, you just have to pass it by resolution to get it going. And then you raise the money in the subsequent year, but because we haven't even put this years to bu- budget together fully yet. You can get it into this year's budget, you just have to update the temporary budget at this point.
Okay, so I guess at this point, Paul, we don't even need a motion, the money's there, he's gonna start on Monday and I guess we'll worry about it once.
Once we discover exactly how in depth the repair will or won't be.
Okay, so no access necessary and we're we're starting out on Monday, okay, that's what I just wanna make sure we're getting something done with that, so. Okay, I guess now we're going to the twenty twenty one budget. John, you gonna start us off, I guess, and let us know where we're at?
Um, well, I don't have a picture of, well. First of all, thank you to Lisa, Lisa's been awesome, she's been providing me with all kinds of information to get us to where we're at at this point. Um, right now, I don't have a tax increase number because I'm missing some significant numbers within the budget.
Right.
Um, I took I took the approach of a three percent increase to all the salary and wage line items. Um, where I was able to get information for other expenses, I was able to plug those numbers in as well. Uh, there are sheets that were spread around this morning, there's a couple of yellow highlights and those are the numbers I'm still waiting for. But where I did not receive any information, like legal, I don't know if legal is gonna change or not, we're putting it in it where it was last year. At this point, so you know, it's I think it's imperative that we all go through it and make the decisions on there to decide, you know, what we want and what funding amount we want on there. I do wanna point your attention over to your revenue side real quick. That's the first page of the budget there that I sent over of the PDF. Yes.
You wanna be able to share your screen maybe, so you could go through it?
Sure, sure.
I'm gonna make you, uh, I'll make you co-host so you can share your screen. All right, you should be able to now.
How's that look?
Okay.
Okay. So right now, I am anticipating, I just wanna hit you with the revenue numbers because some of them are non-recurring. Uh, your fund balance number that we're using this year so far is four hundred and twenty five thousand. Uh, you are able to use more than that, yeah, I would use I'd no more than like five hundred and eighty thousand because that's what you recovered in last year's finances. But so that number right now is low, if we we need if we need to tweak something up, a revenue up, we can use up to about five hundred eighty thousand there. And just just wanna put this out because I I heard something a little while back. This is the amount of money that you're using, okay? This isn't a revenue that we're putting into the budget that you're going to receive. We hope to receive all this money back and regenerate the surplus year after year. But this is actually your balancing piece of the budget. Um, I know that, uh, you know, the question has come up because somebody was under the impression that they were generating not in this committee, but in another, and I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, you'll see the court revenue, coordinate, court revenue was really down last year. You are, um, well, we expected that, we knew that that was gonna be one of the areas when COVID shut everything down. You are able to use a four, a three-year average. When it comes to budgeting revenue, you cannot anticipate more than you gained or you realized last year. So if that held true, we can only anticipate two hundred seventy seven dollars. But the state has allowed us to use any impact COVID impacted lines, we take a three-year average of what you realized over the last three years. So if we do something like that, you could still be roughly, you know, twenty thousand we can put in there. But if you don't think you're gonna get to twenty thousand, there's really no point in putting it in because it's gonna hurt you going forward. So I'd like that number to be a realistic number, we don't have to limit it to two seventy seven. But, uh, you know, we can increase that a little bit. Your interest in cost for way your interest on investments. I don't know, they were down from where they were supposed to come in at last year. Uh, so big hits across the board, you're not the only one. And that number's down and I can only anticipate eighteen thousand and I hope we get that this year. The interest in costs on taxes, the nine thousand. It's not so much a function of, you know, what did we collect last year, but your delinquent taxes have gone down. Uh, so if you see the bottom line down there, we can only anticipate two seventy five this year. Because your collection rate was really good this year or in twenty twenty. And there were fewer delinquencies, so if there's fewer delinquencies, you can only anticipate so much. Uh, so with the delinquencies, we're gonna see the interest and costs on those taxes come down a little bit too. It's great to have such a high collection percentage, but the downside is you don't collect it as much as interest on delinquent taxes because fewer people are delinquent. Um, state aid is supposed to be flat, so we're still at three fifteen there. Um, this one here is the non-recurring revenue. So this this is not coming back in this year, there was a little confusion with Kathleen going out and Karen coming in about bringing this money in and it never was brought in at the end of two thousand nineteen. So we were able to anticipate it as a revenue from open space in twenty twenty. Uh, now that everything is still continually moving along the right way, this money's not available because it's already brought in. So that's could be a potential big hit. Taking a little piece from operating a sewer because we we had some debt. Uh, there was a truck that was being a dual-use type of truck that was purchased. And we're still taking, I think this is the last year that we were planning on taking money from sewer to help pay for their portion of the truck. Open space, uh, this comes over from open space to pay your open space debt, okay, this is the Thomas Stewart Park. Uh, interest was one percent on the bands last year, so a very small amount of that goes to interest, about ninety six thousand go into principal. Uh, and that's just for the Thomas Stewart Park piece. That is not bringing money in for any type of open space to pay for field maintenance or anything like that, so we'll keep that in mind as we go through. Uh, maybe we can take some money from open space and see what we can use to to offset some of the costs with mowing and all. The next few are grants, these are grant funds that you've received, they're sitting in unappropriated reserves, we're just putting them in the budget so we have the authority to spend them. Uh, here's your rich, Rich Line Hill section two grant that we're anticipating, and again, grants are completely offset by by expenditures in the expenditure side. And finally, your delinquent tax number, we we talked about that, it is lower because you had such a good year in collections. So one of the things that I was going to, uh, to let you know you could do is this number, this number down here, this reserve to pay debt service. Uh, this was another one of the where we had money in the capitals fund to pay off debt service. We brought it in, we paid down more in zero and bond anticipation notes, we don't have any this year. But when we get to the debt section, you'll see that debt is down, we we're not, uh, usually, we don't have as much expenses in debt uh, as we did last year, I think there's there's fifty four thousand less if I'm not mistaken. So the fifty four is being offset by the revenue that we're not bringing in, uh, so it's not flat, but it's close. Um, the before we before you you started mayor, you know, I was thinking about using the reserve for sale of asset money for uh, to bring it in for one-time expenses, if there was a purchase of a vehicle or something like that. But if you have an emergent purpose, then I think it's important to bring it in.
Well, you know, John, I think we had anticipated using that as the one-time purpose of fixing the septic anyway, just that it came up sooner than we expected.
Okay. Sooner than later, so I mean, we can put it in the budget, um, if we get an idea. If we have an idea of what it's going to call higher project, um, before the introduction of the budget, we'll make sure it's on the budget dollar for dollar. And we can address it through the budget that way. But like I said, all that needs to be done at this point is a is a line item in your temporary budget. Um, and and you know, the temporary budget. Yeah, it's one of those things where we, it's not something we even look at, it's just or a percentage, a quarter of your budget or one twenty eight, I forget whatever, i- it's meant to hold you over until your budget is introduced is what it is. But, um you know, it's not something that's audited, it's not something that we really look at, we just anticipate that everybody does it and it's fine. Uh, but there's really no check on my end of that introduced but or that temporary budget, so uh, use that information how you want to, but it's not something that I would even look at. So we get off to expenses and, uh, I guess here we start. Um, if anybody wants to start discussing it, I know that, um, go ahead.
Uh, just a question, do we know? Well, one thing that the money that you said you were taking out of sewer operating, can you explain that more?
Yes, sir.
I don't remember.
A few years back, we we had a bigger, uh, bond ordinance and there were purchases of different things, it was a lot for the DPW when you lost equipment in the DPW. EPW building fire, um, we had one vehicle that was a mixed use that was gonna be mixed use, it was gonna be part-time for sewer, part-time for DW. And at that time, we had made, we know, we discussed it then and we said we were gonna eighty eight hundred aside to cover the sewers portion of the queue to the truck. And we were only gonna do it for like four years and I think we're in the fourth year now. I can go back and look, but it's just a funding source to pay that.
Yeah, because I remember when you did the analysis on the trust fund, uh, I think you we were in the red, right, we were we were trending towards towards, um, going in the red on that. And probably
Well.
Just it.
It it's just a matter of paying off your debt, and so I I think it's I think it's a smart move to to charge it where it's being used, so.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to get just maybe an update on where the sewer trust fund is at. We don't have to do that now, but maybe put it on, put it on your list. Um, because I know we did that about it was about done about three or four years ago, we we did that, you did a report on it.
Is that something you're looking at to see if we can reduce the fees or reduce?
Yeah, no, I just wanna know where we stand.
Okay.
Yeah, just to know what's going on.
Sure, at the end of twenty twenty, you are at about nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in surplus in sewer. So still doing well, uh, give me one second.
I think what, I think when you did the report, you were saying that the collections eventually um, weren't gonna cover the expenses. And dip into the, we need to dip into the fund to offset that.
Right, and at this point, you are, uh, let's see, at the end of nineteen, there was nine hundred ninety two thousand. At the end of twenty, there was nine hundred seventy four thousand, so you're down about what, eighteen thousand if my math is right, it's early. So, yeah, you are starting to lose a little bit of that, but that's not that, you know, that's eighteen thousand on a million dollars. I can live with that, and I think you could too, uh, and depending upon where you're looking to have the sewer rates. Uh, if they're staying flat, then I I think you'll be okay for the next couple of, uh, couple of years.
Okay.
If you were to go down, that's where I would have some concern.
Got it. And then do we have, um, do we have a balance on the what's in the open space trust fund? Right now?
Open Space Trust Fund has five hundred thirty five thousand dollars in it.
Okay. And then one last question, I don't have this answer or not, when is the the Thomas Stewart Park due to be paid off?
I have that answer. Just have to bear with me for a second. If interest rates stay lower, then we'll be paying off more principal over time. They have to be paid off by twenty twenty seven. And it's projected that they will be paid off by twenty twenty seven. Uh, we could pay it off sooner if you wanna take more of that five thirty five out of open space to pay off the debt. But when we entered into that bond and did the park, we said that we were gonna pay it off over the ten-year life of the bands.
Right, because, yeah, because we said future residents are gonna enjoy it also and they should be
Absolutely, and I believe that was around nine hundred thousand, so we're paying about ninety six thousand a year in principal right now. And then that means the last year, if we can continue paying the ninety six a year in principal, we'll be down to like sixty eight thousand in in the last year that we have to pay off.
Great, all right, thanks, John.
Sure. So at this point, I didn't know if you wanted to start to go through, um, what we have here and if if there's more information that's needed, you know. It'll give Lisa and I something mainly Lisa because she's the boots on the ground, they are grabbing all this information. Um, but if you have any questions, you know, this is where we go through the the budget and decide where we want everything to be.
Okay. Anybody have any area where they wanna wanna start?
I have something that would be considered new business, but it pertains to the budget, but no, it pertains to the budget, it's up to you, you can hold off on it. No, go ahead. So we, um, we talked last year about this and I, you know, it's stuff that we keep putting off and I think we gotta address it, it's becoming an issue in the town and that's the basketball courts. Um, I did get an estimate on the courts, just the first one. And I just wanted to see where, I mean, I personally think we we can't keep leaving them the way they are, we need to have a plan on fixing them this year. So I just wanna get consensus on that and then see. Uh, we can utilize the the open space trust fund money, so it wouldn't be a hit to the budget at all. But I just wanted to see if we get consensus that we all agree on that we have to fix those courts this year.
I think also maybe the playground too.
In the municipal park you're talking about?
Yeah.
That would all be done out of space money though, correct, Frank?
I know the basketball, yeah, if it's on, that property is considered green acres, it's part of the Rossy, um, so yes. Uh, you can take the money out of, uh, the open space trust fund.
Okay.
So.
Is that something we'd have to budget for that way, John, or?
You would, yeah, because right now you need to have a funding source for the expense. So if you put it in the budget, you gotta bring the revenue over from open space as well.
Okay, so we have to include in the budget that, okay.
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have an estimate on the playground, I could give you the high-end estimate. We don't have to use it all for the basketball courts and we could throw it into the budget. Um, if that's what everybody wants to do.
Right. Okay, so so John, we still have the numbers for like curves and place of fire and social security and all that yet?
The only numbers I don't have at this point and maybe I I don't, I didn't see it was the police salary and wage. Anything in yellow, police salary and wage, uh, the FICA SUI and the DCRP, and that's it.
Okay.
I didn't know what we were doing with capital improvement fund, how much we were putting in there. Uh, but I figured we'd work down through it and
Uh, most of those numbers I was able to either pull from MBOSS or get from some other location. I did speak briefly with Karen and she was suggesting, um, I don't know if you if you all read my email, but I was um, kind of posing the question about what to do with healthcare this year. The new DPW, a full-timer, I understand, um, is potentially waiving the benefits, but I didn't know, you know. And this is a question for John, if he's eligible, do we still include that, you know, as a potential expense, I'm I'm not sure how we handle that, but Karen had suggested that we include a two percent increase overall in healthcare cost.
Well, how I came up with my number was, you know, I I take the conservatives and the you know, you the bill were trending around twenty six thousand a month. Uh, so I took a twelve-month of that and that came to three twelve. And then I netted out the fifty five thousand, which was your contribution from your employees last year to come to two fifty seven. I at two fifty seven, we're we're still up higher than we were last year, we were at two thirty eight and we paid out two thirty six. So I think there's enough in there to cover employee and the increase. Um, and if we have to make a transfer by year end to, to, you know, if it came in at two sixty. You know, we could transfer money in towards the end of the year.
Sounds good.
Okay, so well, let's start with the police, the miscellaneous budget.
Where do we land up, where do we land on on my?
The basketball, are we moving the money over?
Oh. Do you have a number to move over, Frank, or you waiting for numbers yet on that?
Uh, no, no, I have, I have, like I said, I have a high estimate number, it's not, it's probably not the real number because Joe's
I guess, John, John, you can plug it in because it's a wash as far as the budget anyway, we already have the revenue.
I can, right.
Right?
So I get, all right, so let me just pull it up one second.
So John, do you have any number like on what what we're looking at with just with the numbers you have for a tax increase, I guess, I mean, that's a good place to start.
Well, I don't because the biggest number that I'm missing is your biggest number in your bu- in your budget each year. So once I get the police salary, I mean, I can estimate that, you know, I can throw three percent on there and see where we're at, but I don't know if that's legitimate or not.
Right, right.
Don't the police have a contract so we already know what their
Well, no, you have to go through and see which which element are getting increments and stuff this year too, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit harder and it's added a three percent on.
Right.
But my point is, don't they, oh, but they're already, they're getting three percent, that was what was agreed in their contract?
Right. And then then if a guy hits his anniversary date and goes up a step, you know, we we have to figure all those out.
So the high the high number would be one oh five, hundred and five thousand. But additional fourteen thousand if it's prevailing wage, which I don't know if it would be, I think, um,
Okay.
John said it may not be, but if you wanna put a cushion in there, we could just say a total of a hundred and twenty thousand, but I don't think it'll be that, it'll be much less.
Yeah.
Does does anybody know, like, Joe, do you know the condition of the playground? I know it was in getting in rough shape last time I looked at it.
Uh, we do inspections on it and, uh, there there is some things that are starting to fall apart on that.
Um, okay.
I don't know if it would need to be, the parts are available, so we can replace parts without having to totally tear out and replace. So but it would be per parts and and things like that, now I could do a more deeper review and go to game time, since it's a game time setup, we were locked in having to deal with them because it's their their equipment.
Do you do you mind? I I just don't wanna see that, you know, fall apart, you know, it it's still there and, you know, kids do use it, I just don't, and I think it's probably an insurance issue too, right?
Well, we get, we get an insurance audit every year on it and they do an inspection and they write, they're writing up little things, but I also been noticing that track like steps and all all the platforms and that are rubberized and that's starting to come off and there's rust and stuff, so some of that decking either find a process to repair it or just replace it because a repair is gonna just peel up and stuff like that. So like I said, I didn't know this was something on your budget, uh, but I can I can do an inventory of that and and come up with something.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So do we wanna, uh, do we wanna put a hundred twenty thousand for now for the courts? Out of the open space trust fund?
I I'm okay with that because overall it doesn't really affect the budget or tax like we so.
Yeah.
If we put it in and never use it, it doesn't hurt, right?
That's right, that's right, so. Yeah, and they gotta be, I mean, they're there, I mean, that's what the trust funds for, to maintain parks and obtain open space, so.
Anybody else have any objection to put it in there, I mean, I I mean, it's not like we're authorizing the construction of them, we're just putting in case we choose to, if we don't use it, just because this stays in the fund.
Yeah.
I guess hearing none.
Want me to make a motion on it or how do we?
No, I don't, I don't think we have to because we're not, you know, we'd be in the final budget anyway, we're just putting in for now, so.
All right, uh, thank you. Hundred twenty thousand for now and then Brian's gonna look at the park, I mean, the playground.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I, Police Department, Rich Hammer I know is on. Are we looking at his his miscellaneous expenses staying pretty much the same as last year, is that right, Rich?
Next, he's still muted.
I'm looking, let me check to see if he's He is, okay, I just asked him to unmute.
Yes, sorry, you had me muted, um. Salaries, uh, there are increases with and, uh, if you do have to clap to that, it'll also increase. Uh, I anticipate, I can give you an anticipated number for I anticipate one, one point two seven five, two, two, three, forty.
Did I get that right, do you see, do you see the screen?
Uh, sorry, hold on, I
That can't be right, it's going down.
Now, because it's slower.
Yeah, it's slower, it can't be right.
Hold on, let me stay, I'm sorry, I'm going, I I can't log on through Zoom through my, uh, work computer. Uh, through my laptop, so I'm going through both both computers here, hold on, um. Uh, through my laptop, so I'm going through both, both computers here, hold on, um. Alright, you have thirteen, seven, five, two, two, three, forty, um, you know what, I'm wondering if that is including. Do you notice that including holiday pay, anticipated holiday pay?
I don't know, I mean, I, I, you just gave me the number, so I don't, I really don't know what that includes. Uh, it, holiday pay isn't separated out into any other line, so I'm assuming that.
Yeah, then that, alright, uh, that might be why. Yeah, is that the, is that the number that, that you put in there? Is that the number that you got from my budget, uh, worksheet?
From the, for the O and E in the police car, yes. Uh, it was combined on your worksheet into that one oh five, roughly one oh five, five. But I just took it out for budget purposes.
But, okay, because the salaries I didn't, uh, I didn't have a hard number with because I don't, I didn't have access to that. To gain that number from the system, but, uh, it's like I have anticipated one. Point, uh, one four, one four, five, five, two, two, three, forty. It's going off of, uh. My worksheet that I had submitted. Um, in the salaries, uh, tab. Yeah, some sort, I see, John, I see you went off of last year's, yeah, that, uh. That number that you put in there. Um, wasn't a total breakdown of everything, I, I think, uh, that's the last number that I had, um, gotten. From, uh, I believe it was Karen, I, I can't remember when I got that number last, that I put in the, uh, my first worksheet there. But, uh, that had the overall stuff, but when you look in my, uh, salaries worksheet, um. Everything broken down with, um, including the anticipated, uh, increases in whatever maybe with stuff longevity. Um, and whatnot.
Okay.
In the, I'm sorry, in the, uh, anticipated higher of a class two.
Okay. Yeah, I had the O and E breakdown, I didn't see the salary and wage breakdown, that's why I didn't have that number in. So if there is some kind of spreadsheet, if I can get that emailed to me, just so I have it in the file, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I will send it to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Rich, what about miscellaneous, uh, I know we have the cameras in there, that's a big expense and you, you figure we have to do that all this year?
Uh, you mean at the municipal building?
No, uh, for the body cameras for the police. Five or forty thousand itself, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, um, I mean, I think it's gonna be, uh, depending on what happens going forward with, uh. With the state, but I think it's, uh, definitely something that we should look into, uh, now the only, uh. The one big issue we have with that is, um, as I discussed, uh, with you. Um, after the meeting, our, our server right now, um, we have about a, a, a year left on the, uh. On the warranty and at that point we'll add, uh, our server for, I believe, six years. Um, it's going to be, need to be replaced and if we're going to be replacing it. At that point, we might as well, um, replace it with something that would be able to handle. Body cams and whatnot, so something more robust than what we're, you know, what we've been originally replaced with. Uh, and we were anticipating to, you know, try to do that next year, which, uh. That, that could be, I, I've given an estimated figure of like ten thousand dollars. But, uh, it's not a, uh, it's not a hard number.
But, but that's all inclusive in, in that fifty seven for the miscellaneous expense, fifty seven thousand?
No, no, the, uh, the body cameras, that was, uh, that's not included in the, uh, that was included in my just my large items. Except for my regular, oh, I'm sorry, let me just, uh. Uh, no, because I don't think so, no, um, John, that, uh. Where is the, are the, is the police car in the miscellaneous, is that all strictly just the OE numbers?
That was just the OE numbers, uh, I have it up, but I don't know how to, oh, I can, let me stop sharing this one. And start sharing this one. Is this the one you were referring to, chief?
That was totally separate.
Yeah.
From my regular OE.
Right, and these were more, you, these were bigger ticket items that weren't in the OE. That some of them were capital type items that we can discuss for capital, uh.
Yeah, with the exception, I think I included the AEDs in my regular OE because I felt that that's kind of where. We don't really have a, an option with that, um, but the, uh. Yes, the body cameras were not included and the mobile sign was not included in my regular OE. Because, uh, I was thinking that those might, might be, uh, a capital expenditure. And you had the, uh, you had the vehicle, um, you already had the vehicleized call, so.
Well, I, I think the AED has got to stay in, John, no matter what, I, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that point, I don't, I don't have any choice with them. The mobile sign board could probably get put off if we have to cut something. And the body cameras, I think, are dependent upon what the state really mandates and. Rich, from talking to some other chiefs and, you know, you go to the chief's meetings. They're anticipating that the state's gonna come up with money for some of this, because even, even for the storage space, because it's, it's really exorbitant for a lot of townships to, uh. Take on, so, have you been hearing anything through the chief's meetings or anything about that?
I haven't heard anything, uh, other than, and this was from, uh. From the state themselves, that they were only looking to help us with the purchase of the actual cameras themselves. Which is a minute cost of that whole, um, figure right there. That would, I, I would estimate only six thousand dollars maybe, that they would give us.
Uh huh.
So the bulk of it, they would put on the town, at this point, that's what I'm.
Do you have a deadline on when you have to have the body cameras on? I, I mean, they don't even have them delivered to you yet or anything, right? I mean, there's nothing.
No, no, they, they anticipate, um, I believe they're anticipating, uh, in the summer, uh. That they were gonna, uh, roll that out, that, that directed, however, I.
So I'm trying to get at, if it doesn't go into effect until August or September, I mean, can we, can we? Cut some of these numbers down to like half or even a, a quarter? Because, I mean, by time, I mean, do we have enough space to store until January and it's something we can address next year? Or what happened this year, half for January, or?
I, I, uh, well, the big thing is, we might have, uh, room for like a camera on our current server. Like one, but the purchase that we would have to do with the redact software. For, you know, blurring out people's, uh, faces or whatnot, that is a huge cost. That we would have, we would have to get.
Right, right.
Whether it's one camera, six cameras.
How about? I mean, i- i- is anybody talk like, I mean, for that, that type of software, that's the expensive part, does every department need it? Or is there something we could do with shared services with other departments? Has anybody looked into that, or it's just, that's not feasible, it'd be ridiculous every time you get a request to have to go to somewhere else, or?
Yeah, no, because I, I, you know what, I haven't looked into that, but I, I think that that's like built right into your, uh. Your system, um, so I, I, you know what, I, that's something I can look into, uh. And it's gonna be depending on using.
Blurring faces is when you actually have to release it, right? I mean, you could store it.
Yes, correct. Yeah, the only thing is, I anticipate like to meet the, getting, getting a bombardment of requests for. Once they realize you have mobile camera footage.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, the only thing is that also, uh, sharing. That, uh, redaction software, you would have to have the same type of, uh, setup, I believe. Uh, for instance, if we use, uh, the body cams, the same ones, so, so you, uh, use for the mobile cameras. Um, there's, uh, there's a neighboring agency that uses that same program, so it would work out. However, the other agencies, I, I don't know if they're going to go with, uh, the same type of, uh. Bender we use.
Right. Okay. So basically, we still don't know what to put in here, do we?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I'm just giving that estimated figure because.
Well.
I don't know.
I, I, John, I guess for budgeting purposes, put in the AEDs, I guess, put in, let's put in the lower number of the body cams, thirty five, I hope that's okay. And let's just drop the mobile sign board, because that's really our request more than Rich's anyway, I think.
Okay, um, I think the AEDs are already in the O and E number, so that's one good thing. Uh, the body cams, I think I can put outside a cap, I don't have to keep that in, uh, because it is a. Capital type item and the software and the expense that you're gonna go through. Uh, I would hope that they would be able to justify that and say that we'll, uh, put that in. And you can use it as capital and not have a, a budget hit, uh, inside your cap for that. So with the, so if I go down to capital, I'll throw it in the thirty five. If that's the number you look, just, um.
Well, I, I, should we do thirty five, or since you're going to capture, we put it at the forty, I guess that's the question, what would you recommend, the thirty five or forty or somewhere in between, or?
You know, I've seen this in, we've done the budget now for Washington Township. Um, they were budgeting only a half a year expense for the storage. There in, just like Chief Hammer had said, you know, the, the thinking is that you're gonna be on the hook for all of that. And you're only gonna get a small portion of the actual body, body cams back, so.
Right.
It threw a rant, I'd say, yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think forty is fine, I, I just think we need to see where all the other numbers in the budget come in. Before we, you know, keep that a locked number, so if we need to cut five thousand from somewhere, maybe that's where we take it and hope for the best.
Okay, that's good. Okay, uh, crossing guards are really not, there's no way we need to cut and if we go up to three percent, that number is pretty much fixed. So I guess we move on the road, uh, with Joe and Paul, we side, uh, or discuss what, where they feel they're at.
Can I just ask the chief of, of, a question real quick?
Absolutely.
Uh, the crossing guard salaries, that's not part of police salary and wage that you factored in, correct?
Correct, that is a client item and.
Okay.
We go back on the, uh, on the OE, you had, uh, you had just those, uh. Those, that fifty seven number was just those larger items that you had showed me the worksheet on, but my actual OE. Um, did you, uh, want that number in there as far as, uh, all my other stuff?
I pulled that number straight from a sheet that, um, that had OE on it. And, and again, the sheet total, it what, it didn't, it didn't have, it was separate from the one that I was just sharing. Uh, and it had about a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of expenses and the only thing I broke out of there was the police car. If you have a new updated sheet, let me know and, uh, we can work the numbers.
Okay, no, I think, uh, I think you, I think you have that right and like I said, I'm just gonna, uh, I'm gonna switch over, I'm gonna email you my, uh. My sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for Joe and Paul?
Joe, you wanna just keep the, uh, the O and E in the same number?
Sure, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was figuring.
Yep, yep, we're gonna keep that at the same, that's what I proposed, uh, the first budget meeting and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the, we wanna go to salaries and things. Um, I know we had a conversation, I brought up about the, uh, where we stand. Comparing some salaries and stuff and the mayor and I and you have had a conversation about Jeff Powell. And I guess if you wanna call it, um.
Let's not use any name, Joe, let's stay away from names and stuff because we're talking personnel issues. So for, for, for that S and W, I was just gonna ask that we increased that by about fifty three hundred and then we could discuss in executive session how we came up with numbers.
Oh, okay, uh, uh, yeah, probably, probably gonna be near, um, six. Because I had to figure in the little bit of bump would be as overtime rate also.
Right.
Okay, so with, with the amount of hours, um, so that there. And I know in the past, our salary, my, my salary and overtime and things for the seasonal part time. We haven't been using nowhere near what's been budgeted, but lo and behold. We have a normal winter this year, I'm gonna say normal because everybody don't think it is, but this is about a normal winter. Right now, just going through that, so it's in everybody's head. I did some figuring, uh, on the hours, overtime hours and stuff like that, twenty, twenty, twenty. Uh, we had a couple guys only had a hundred and nine hours, ninety one hours, stuff like that for the whole year. Right now, through the end of December, hundred and ten hours, a hundred and eleven hours of overtime. So I estimate at two hundred hours and overtime wise for, for everyone. And my part timers, snow plowing and things like that is probably right about one, hopefully not, uh. Not underestimated because through the summer, starting April till about end of November. We average in the area sixty, seventy, uh, overtime hours, um, that's special events, I'm gonna say. Cleanup twice a year, uh, doing a little bit of, uh, doing the lawn debris and stuff like that. Which we use to clean communities money to help offset that, but, um, community day when. The crews are working garbage, this and that, and taking care of things like that. And the occasional storms where trees down, so forth, so on. So I think just talking that position upgrade will just change my figures by about six thousand dollars for salary, O and A.
So, so just change S and W, John, to two fifty?
Okay, so I, I have a total of all of these, so we, what do we wanna update the total to? Uh, so, right now, my total is three oh six, how much more do we wanna add on that?
Uh, well, okay, I'm looking at the, your budget sheet where you have two forty three, six eighty seven for us, salary and wages on the road repairs and maintenance. That's what I'm saying, let's just take it up to two fifty, then everything changes however you say it changes, for now.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, it, no, I, I, I'm a little lost, I.
I'm looking at page two of the budget worksheet you gave us.
Okay, is that what I, that's what the screen that's sharing right now?
No.
Okay, that's why I'm.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the, the, your four page sheet you gave us on the budget worksheet.
Okay. So, yeah, I had three oh six.
Yeah, that, that.
Do you want me to?
Right.
Three, okay.
Because that includes the part time, the overtime rates and everything.
Okay, right.
Yes.
Now, does that need to go up by six more or you already included?
That, that will need to go up by six more.
Okay, let, let's make that. Okay, let, let's make that three twelve, one seventy, and John, please.
Okay, done.
For now, for now. We're talking about
For now.
Yeah, we're talking about that.
Okay, um, I guess then the last thing of keeping the O and E in the same, like I said, and there's nothing that, with that of using the salt and stuff, I used to, uh, the last couple of years, I've had some surplus, but we're at thirty-two, and I got another hundred ton of salt coming in, so I'm gonna probably use up the salt budget this year, not like the past years. Maintenance wise, we've had a little issue, I have a truck out getting a rear end put in it, that's a thirty-five hundred dollar hit, but my maintenance budget for all the equipment and trucks should be, uh, could be okay, well, I, I consider if, if we need to, if I have an emergency, I go over what I allotted, I'll have to come to the committee and we'll address it that way. But I think I can fit everything in there. Uh, so that brings us to the capital expenditures part of, uh, the DPW O and A. So, uh, I was asked to do a priority list. Um, and we, I put the, the new, you wanna call it ten-ton truck at the top of the list, uh, but with the prices, that's gone up over the last couple of years fro, by about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. We're, we're looking at from one eighty to one eighty-five to about two twenty now. Um, but that was also going with the roll-off, uh, style of truck. So what we've, but outside that, that's probably bonding, and if you're gonna do that this year or not, if that drops off, what's in our capital, what we've put aside for capital projects, like what we did with tobacco, within, within, without bonding and stuff. Um, probably would fall into, uh, addressing the leaf pickup and purchasing the clamshell bucket for the loader, which we already have the machine, at about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, to change our services for that, from bag leaves to picking up loose leaves for the fall program. And then the, uh, other thing, which, uh, with the mowing and us taking over right now, this year, the township properties, but for future, looking to move towards the, getting the schools back to the DPW, uh, purchasing of the tractor and the bigger tractor and mower with the fifteen-foot flex mower on it, we're at, uh, under the Sourcewell contract, sixty-two five forty-four for that purchase, where maybe we discussed those, maybe open space could handle some of that sense, it would be doing part of, uh, or the biggest part of the open space, that could be used at Thomas Stork Park, except for I'm gonna say in the areas around the buildings, and on the playing surfaces, I would use the smaller landscaper mowers that do a nicer cut, give it a little better manicure, but the open areas, uh, the passive recreation areas, this fifteen footer would probably cut, cut that job down from two guys all day to two guys half a day, one on the little mower, one on the big mower.
Hey, John, when does the OS get replenished? At what point? Like every year?
Well, you raise that tax, um, and the tax revenue comes in. And it just, you know, we, we take the money out towards the end of the year, usually, and send it over, you know, whatever the tax levy is for the year. Um.
So, so it just hit, it just accumulates throughout the year?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the, um, what's the total that we get yearly on that?
Uh, let's see.
Hundred and eighteen thousand.
Yeah, about right.
Good guess, huh? We get a hundred and eighteen thousand yearly added to the OS? That sounds low, really? Two cents, one cent's about fifty-eight, fifty-three thousand. No, it's four cents. Is that before?
Four cents, let me, so should we? Let me just take a quick peek. Just give me one second.
Yeah, I thought it was in the two hundred something range. Well, then obviously it would be two, two thirty-six or something, then.
Two hundred and thirty thousand is what the number is, it is worth that tax.
I get confused with that.
And, and John, we could also use some of the lease money for, uh, help purchasing a, a mower to open, to do open space too, correct? Uh, one, uh, I, I need to see the open space ordinance to make sure that you'd be allowed to do something like that. If you're mowing. Uh, Frank Pinto and those guys said that we could use that money towards maintaining open space, and obviously mowing's uh, uh, maintaining open space. Right, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, if that mower is down at the field, and it's mowing the field, and it doesn't leave there, then yeah, that's legitimate. But if you're mowing the school within, and you're mowing, you know, other properties that are in open space, it's technically not. Yeah, well, we weren't talking a hundred percent cost bu- purchase there, we were just talking a percentage for where it's used for that. And at this point, I'm gonna guess. Yeah, if you could break up. Yeah, currently, that's justified. Eighty percent, if we go to the schools, it might break down to sixty-five percent, but right. Okay. Okay.
Also, we'd be saving on the percentage of paying the contractor, uh, what we have allotted from twenty twenty and stuff, so that we're
What kind of number?
Part of the
Kind of number? What kind of number are we talking about?
Kind of number we're saving?
Not, well, the number that Paul's looking at, the portion of the lease or whatever he just mentioned.
Did we have like a comparison to see like cost savings?
Well, the cost savings, Joe, wasn't it around seventeen thousand dollars just this year alone?
Uh, yeah, it would be, that's taken, it was eighteen, taken the township-owned properties off of the contractor, now that's using the existing numbers. Now, we gotta go out and rebid the schools, since I, like I told you, is I don't have the machinery or the man-hours in a week to mow what we have.
Right.
So, uh, we don't know what that number's gonna be for doing the two schools, at least for twenty twenty-one. If we purchase this piece of equipment this year, and I would need it this year if I'm gonna take over in twenty twenty-two. Now, if you wanna keep the contractor for a second year, we'll put the options in there with that. If it just don't work out into the budget this year, and do it for twenty twenty-two purchase. So the DPW takes over in twenty twenty-three, take, taking care of the schools. That, that option's there, I can handle the township properties with machinery I have right now.
Well, dare I go to this territory, you think we can ask the school to contribute towards the purchase of the equipment one, at one time, I mean, we're not asking to pay for and we've always mowed the lawn and take, taken care of them, but there I go there, I mean, I know it's a lot of the same parts, people pay for it, but for budgeting purposes, might be easier for us, or not that tough now.
They got their budget numbers yesterday, and I think it was like they just lost like three hundred and forty thousand stated for next year.
Okay, so I dare not go there.
They won't like you.
Yeah. Well, I just thought it was. Okay.
Great idea, though.
I agree.
Well, I know, I, I didn't wanna hit him forever, but I just thought maybe for the purchase would make it easier, but then, then you said that, there's, I mean, it all comes out in the same pot, that's why I'm not a big arguer on going back and forth with these, uh, expenses, but I just thought for budgeting purposes, for the one time, it might help us.
Right, just, just for some numbers, uh, I know last year, or last two year, or last year, mowing the two schools was twenty-nine thousand dollars of the contract.
Right.
And the past few years, we also saw and patched the driveways and parking lots, uh, last year we were low, but I'm at my estimated seat, we're just under seven thousand dollars with salt and truck and man-hours, salt and just solving the two schools.
Right.
And the only other thing I got on near the bottom of my list, the capitals was, uh, or to add a pickup truck with a snowplow, we have a two thousand eight that, as I said a couple times there, and on my replacement schedule, should be replaced, but I'll keep it around until the wheels fall off to side, and then we'll get rid of it, and then we'll have that truck in place already. And then there was a power rate for maintaining the parking playgrounds, that would help us maintain baseball fields, even works on stone parking lots and things like that, I, I probably have a lot of, uh, use for, a lot of work for that item also. But they're, they're more near the bottom of my list.
Well, the, the power rate sounds like is a hundred percent used for parks, so that should have come a hundred percent.
Correct, it'd be the baseball fields, uh, matter of fact, the bear areas, I know everybody's seen them there, that would help me get chew them areas up, spread topsoil on it, give a good couple inches, seed it, and maybe especially out in front, and uh, everybody sees, and I, uh, at least I see it, right there by the playground between the walking path, that real weedy area, it's, it's leg, and that's what you get growing in there, thistles and dandelions and stuff, there's no, there's no suitable topsoil in that area, and there's other spots in there. I'm not worried about the backside, behind the playing fields and stuff, but the parents driving by, coming in, I think we all have that thought with that, is you wanna see it nice and green and flush grass. That, that's, that's the appeal.
And you, and you can use that on the fields, huh?
Yeah, I can use that, what I do is I can, we can set it and just break up, you know, how the baseball fields get that hard pack?
Yeah.
I'll break that up, that'll help me take care, get the weeds out of it at the spring, the prep for, for that, like I said, there's settings and able to set that, and that, that'll attach to the existing little John Deere tractor that we have, that we use as our sidewalk machine and things like that.
Okay, well, that would be a hundred percent financed by open space, so you wanna, should we kick it back to open space committee to talk about it? Uh, or should we just put it in, and we can take it out after you guys talk about it, if you don't think it's a good expenditure?
I would just kick it to open space right from the word go.
Pardon?
I would just kick it to open space right from the word go.
What are we kicking back? I think that should be a hundred percent financed by open space.
Right.
Which
Uh, the power, or the power rate for about not, uh, nine thousand ninety dollars.
I think it'll be useful.
As a matter of, yeah, right there, that one, number four.
What are the odds you can get that in time for this year's use, John, uh, Joe?
Budget has to be approved.
Well, I mean, if it was approved, would you, would you be getting it for this year, or is?
Well, yeah, it'd just probably be, I don't know if it's in stock, just waiting for the, the order, uh, I can there's some people that, and I rented one, uh, to do the landscaping around the
Right.
uh, pavilion out there, the new one and stuff, but like I said, you got, got, if we, if we continue to rent, you gotta depend availability, picking it up, taking it back, stuff like that.
I don't know, I, I, I get that, I'm just asking, is is, do we, if we budget it, are we gonna be able to get it this year, or is this something we could, uh?
No, if you budget it, I'll, I'll make sure that we, we get it right away.
I, I have no problem with throwing it in at, uh, for now, is anybody else?
No.
With the, with the funding source would be open space, though.
I have no.
I have no problem, I think that would be useful.
Me too.
John, you, you wanna add that in there, wherever you're gonna plug that?
I'm adding it in.
Okay, and then let's go back up to the top, I guess.
I'm adding a lot in, everybody, so don't, uh.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, it's so hard with our blind, we're blind with the total number, I guess, yet, so how about the roll-off, uh, Joe and, uh, Paul, I mean, should we try half, like we did with the, uh?
Well, I think we should be budgeting for it, but yes, half at a time would be fine, well, actually, though, I don't know that we're gonna have half of it this year if we move forward, how much of the, the tractor is gonna burn up that half, the balance of what's left be put towards that?
Okay.
The, the leaf grapple hook, uh, bu- bucket, where, and I guess this would be for John, since it leaf cleanup and stuff like that's a clean communities act, and we're recycling them leaves to a recycler. Where could we use maybe some past funding that's there in them other accounts for the offset that?
So clean communities, just seeing what we have. We do have quite a bit of money in old clean community grants. Uh, I will look, uh, for next meeting at the percentage you can use.
I believe it's twenty-five percent, John.
Yes, uh, for equipment purchases, I am seeing it right now, it looks like you've got six uh, thirty-one forty-three, maybe forty-five thousand in, uh, clean community grants that date back to two thousand sixteen that are available to use. So you do have some money in clean communities that it could be charged to the grant on it.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that you can use like twenty-five percent for, you know, say the actual event of leaf cleanup, but then there's a twenty-five percent, I believe, cap also on equipment. I don't think you can combine the two.
I don't think you can either.
Yeah, I don't think so. At least we tried that.
Does it sound like you definitely want the grapple claw bucket in there, correct?
Uh, if, if you want loose leaf pickup, yes, or we maintain the bag leaf pickup, and there's no expense there.
So what I can do for now is I could put it in for fifteen thousand, and then we can charge the other five thousand to the grants, I don't have to put that in, because they're already reserved. Um, so I could put fifteen thousand in for the grapple claw bucket.
That'd be, that was, uh, last year's price, they're expecting about ten percent, so I need to do seventeen.
Okay, I'll go seven.
They didn't have the co-op price of figures yet, when I was working on my budget. That, that's all I have, that's more than a, a big chunk of what's going on.
That's all you have, Joe?
That's all I have.
I, I'm gonna say what I probably say every year as I go down here. There's a whole lot of items on here, or so minimal, I don't even know how we can cut them, but I do wanna jump down to municipal court. Uh, we're in the cop process and negotiating a contract with them, Paul and I have discussed this. And I think we have to budget about thirty thousand in that municipal court cost, John, for, for, uh, this year.
Right, I have it in there, or maybe you didn't get the updated one.
Yeah, you know, I did see it, now you mention, yeah, just so, and the reason for that is, is if the, uh, revenue from the, uh, uh, fines and stuff don't cover the cost of the court, we'll figure we might have to come up with some money to offset that, so.
Thank you.
Uh.
Do we wanna talk about buildings and grounds, I didn't, no, I wasn't done, I'm sorry, apologize.
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, uh, like I said, I made that priority list for building the grounds, and we know about the township septic system, the building, municipal building septic system, so looks like we're going to address that. Um, and just, just to bring you up to date, what, I've talked to somebody, so what we're gonna try to do to make a temporary fix is uh, open up the distribution box and try to jet it, try to get it to take some water. I was told if we start ripping and tearing and even just doing the drain field, we don't wanna become this year's DP, uh, DEP poster child, or a lawsuit and stuff, you need a plan, you need permits. So, but I can dig up the distribution box, see, and try to get it flowing, jet it, and I've talked to somebody to maybe get some, uh, em- enzymes and stuff in there and help the road if it is with solids, and try to get it to take some water till we can get a plan drawn, permits pulled. Plan drawn, permits pulled and do the job. And the next thing I have to check into is, is that a job that we can do? Or is it have to be done by a licensed septic. Company, construction company, uh that there was uh brought to my attention. So right now, we're going to do that repair and try to get that thing to at least. Just uh distribute some of the water because that's the biggest thing. It's holding, it's holding water to septic tank itself. All right. So on the list there, the septic system was up there on the on the DP, on the buildings and grounds list for improvement. Uh, I had on there the replacement of the two man doors entering the existing firehouse in DPW because they're rotten. And all involved and also. I'm going to say six years ago, we had the roof for the municipal building cleaned. And that's going to be outlawed and resealed. They painted it with a silver. Uh, paint and seal it and the rain spouts, uh rain gutters sealed up. The roof painting and ceiling have to be an outside contractor. I'm thinking about sixty five hundred, seven thousand dollars. Uh, the rain fixing the rain spouts from leaking and stuff, DPW can handle. That could be just a general maintenance thing. I don't think that's very expensive. And then of course, we. Could look into replacing this roof. But uh, we don't know what the future holds here for what what's going to happen with this building if it uh. Future has a new municipal building or what into it and this comes something else, then it becomes. If you want to call it a secondary building or storage or just the DPW. Um, but that's pretty much the short list of. Budget items or capital for the municipal bill.
And Joe, it says right here under public buildings and grounds. Last year we budgeted uh sixty five thousand eight hundred and fifty. We only expended thirty eight thousand eight hundred dollars, so there's some wiggle room. In and around that number for a variety of repairs that we're talking about too, correct?
Yes, uh, the ladies bathroom upstairs probably sets one toilet's been removed because of handicap purpose stuff. But I I should get some kind of cabinet or something to cover them drain pipes are sealed and stuff, but it's it's a eyesore and I don't want to. Cut it off and refloor it. I'm just going to cover it with, put a cabinet or something in there just for storage and. And make it not a tripping hazard and stuff, but like I said, that's small little things like that. And and plus, I'm I'm in the process of getting quotes for cleaning services and. I think we need to add to it and it hasn't been in the past is maybe doing a by. Uh, twice a year, at least having the hallways uh upstairs. Wax the wax strip, wax, clean properly, do some carpet shampoo, especially down with the police department stuff. But I think within the janitor budget, we can handle that with what's been appropriate.
Okay, where are we going from there?
Uh, that that that's everything that I had on my list. Thank you.
Okay, I guess John, because we added a lot. What are we looking at here? You have any any numbers for us yet or anywhere we can? Discuss.
Um, I would like to, let's see. See if I get my other screen back up. Okay. I'm still missing and you know, I obtained a couple of these SUI number for last year. I'll put in um the same deferred contribution plan and then I'll bump FICA up by. Three percent because I I don't have this number, but I don't know. You know, where we want to be at. So at least if I have these numbers in here, then I could start crafting and seeing where we're at. I don't know if there's any other lines you want to go through and and you know, the one thing that I was that. Um, we have this seventy five thousand here for general government. And how I came up with it was through Lisa's analysis. We have a reserve for codification of ordinances. So I'm thinking if we could take this out, we could just charge it to the reserve that we have. Uh, but I wanted to run that by Lisa before I do anything with that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think.
And then, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you want to go down the list or not. I I I'll get you a number, but um. I want to make sure that we have as much as we as we have in here.
Yeah.
You know, I want to make sure that it's right before I start crafting the number.
Well, I. I mean, anybody can speak however you want. I I think we're at a point where I think we need to plug in all the numbers. You got to tell us where we're at with the tax levy and we got to decide what we do from there, which is not something we're going to be able to do today, I assume then, right?
Right, well, I, yeah, like this one here, I have no planning board O and E. I don't know if there's going to be O and E for the planning board this year or if I.
Oh, that, I'm glad you brought that up.
So I had sent you the number for the um for the review of the master plan. Is that already included elsewhere or is that here?
That was elsewhere. That was seventy five hundred. I put that elsewhere, but I could throw that in here and take it out of wherever I have it.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted. That's what I wanted to address. So what do we have for the operating expense without the master plan review? What did you have in there for like, I guess you're taking last year's number?
Well, yeah, that's what I want to, you want me just to take last year's number and then.
For the regular operating expense and then we could talk about the master plan review.
Okay. If you're doing a a master plan review, a a whole new one. You can do it as a budget emergency during the year and then spe- spread out the payment over the next five budgets. Right, so they let you have a a master plan emergency, say the cost was fifty thousand dollars. Then you would just take in ten thousand dollars each year into the budget over the next five years. If you wanted to go that route.
Well, I don't think the number's that large, so I mean, as uh. As Lisa said, was seven that, what was it, Lisa, seven?
I think seventy five hundred was the request for this year from the planner.
Yeah, and we have to get it done by March of next year. It really has to be done this year, so. I don't know what everybody, I mean.
Frank, didn't we as the the board decide that we were going to try to do the in-house during the meetings when we're already paying the professionals?
Yeah, but this is still.
Cost down.
Well, it's the cost is the cost, so that that was all taken into consideration.
Right.
When Kendra sent me the estimate. So we could put it in there and we get, when we get to the final tax levy, we could talk about it if we need to. Yeah, that that's fine. I mean, that, just so everybody knows, the plan was to take about an hour for each meeting over the entire year. To discuss this and whatever off hour time they need to prepare. So if we think that that was too much, we could, we could talk about cutting it. If we don't think they need to spend a whole year on it, but I would say leave it in there for now and then we'll um we'll address it later. If we need to.
And Frank, and are you still uh negative on talking to the Highlands about money that they have available for? These reviews and plans and such?
I'm not negative about talking to the Highlands. I already talked to John about it and there's no such provision in there. Um, you have to be conforming with them to get anything from them. We're not.
I mean, and that may very well be accurate, but that is, again, back last year when I accidentally ran into that whole group. Uh, they certainly didn't make it sound that way.
Yeah, I know.
Ten, eleven years ago, the town collected a significant amount of money from them just for these purposes.
No, they, that was different. I already covered it with uh a previous planner, Beth. I already went through it with John. The only way you're getting money from the Highlands, you could write this down and you could book it, is you got to conform with them. That's it. You're not going to get any money from, they're not going to pay you money if you're not going to conform to their plan. I mean, it doesn't even make sense, does it? Why would they pay you money if you're not going to conform with their plan? They're not getting anything out of it. So you could go and ask John if you want again, but we already addressed this. They're not going to give you money if you don't conform.
Frank, do they, do they then have control your zoning? Is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why we don't conform. We brought this up to the town committee and to the land use board and we don't want to give our. A lot of our decision making over to the Highlands. So the town and the land use board decided we're we're not going to opt in. So. Feel free to talk to John if you want, Paul, but.
No, I will. It's just those folks, when I talk to them, they didn't leave me with that impression, but if that's the case, that may be.
Yeah, yeah, but um, I mean, if you think about it logically, right? Why would they give you any money? For anything if you're not going to conform to the Highlands plan, if you're not going to opt in, they get, there's no, they don't get anything out of it. Right, so talk to John, though. Go ahead and you could confirm it with him, but I thought we covered this last year and kind of settled it.
Well, I don't know that it had actually gotten settled, but.
All right, well, go ahead. If you find anything different, then, you know, feel free to bring it back. I'll ask him again, but I think I know the answer. Okay. Anything else? You know, I noticed Shannon's on our new CFO, Frank. You want to unmute her and see if she has. I, I, yeah, I let I let everybody have their own ability unmute since we don't have any. Shannon, you have anything that you've been listening to this?
I actually don't see her anymore. Bob, do you?
Oh, I don't know. I I haven't looked at, I saw her on earlier, so I just wanted to say.
Yeah, she might have dropped off.
Yeah, she must have, okay. I just wanted to give her the opportunity to ask a question if she had any, so. Anybody have anything else or? Do we think this is something what we have left to do really is the chopping block? Can we do that as a regular meeting or do we want to schedule another budget meeting? I would think another budget meeting. You think another budget meeting? I mean, if we're going to go through and we're going to start looking to cut things. It it could take, it could take a while, I would think. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Well, you, what do we, do we want to do Saturday morning again? Yeah, that's fine with me. Any Saturday you want. Next week is the sixth. John, could you have the numbers done by then?
I can have the numbers available next Saturday.
Okay, is everybody available next Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Lisa, you have enough time to do advertising, have any for next Saturday?
Yeah, it'll go in as another special, but we can get it in.
Okay. So it sounds like we're all good with Saturday the sixth. We need a motion on that, Lisa?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll just take care of it tomorrow.
And Lisa, real quick, I I don't know, is Joe uh Mexi still there?
Looks like he stepped away, but he's on.
No, because why? He's got to prepare for, he's going to a wedding. Uh, we need to uh get the um. The lawn mowing contract in the newspaper ASAP. And I know Joe last time wanted to meet with all the eligible bidders uh at one specific time. So you should identify that with him and get it advertised so that we can get it approved by our town meeting in the third week in March.
Okay.
So you might want to just touch base with him.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else?
Well, I got a number for you if you want the number. And I'm just checking to make sure you're sitting down. You know, we we. We've um, well, let me get to it. You can still see the screen, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. You got a nine point four cent increase right now with how it sits right now.
Yeah.
There is, you are, I haven't figured out this cap yet. I didn't do the workbook, but you are over the cap by a hundred and twelve thousand. So you're going to have to, first thing you got to do is cut a hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the the inside cap of the budget.
Right.
Because you're only allowed to raise expenditure so much and we have um. Quite a big of an increase in the inside the cap this year.
And Brian, what was, uh, what are you hearing about at the schools for? I mean, it's going to be a pretty big hit.
I'll tell you, right? Yeah, I'll tell you right now if you, if you want. They are. Since two thousand eighteen. They've absorbed a decrease in one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, so they're they're in rough shape right now. The last meeting, what, they were around six hundred thousand. I don't know, they're. They're going to need help.
No, if they were six hundred thousand, that's almost ten cents for them.
Yeah.
Well, they're capped, right?
They are capped as well.
Yeah, they're capped.
We were talking about. They have a two percent cap as well, I believe.
Yeah. But even if they could, they're at ten cents already if they wanted, if they could do it.
Yeah, and they were talking about, I I don't know what question they would put on a ballot, but they were talking about having to put something on.
Tell you, we're getting crushed out in these counties.
I tell you, it's certainly, you you are, uh, there's no getting around it.
Yep, I mean, Trenton is just crushing us. Okay. I guess we got a lot of homework to do before our next meeting because.
Yeah.
I know that's unacceptable.
Now. On top of the cuts, I'm going to go back to the revenue page here. Remember, you know, it it is nine point four cents, but we can increase, you know, the use of surplus. Um, there is money that's sitting in the general capital fund balance. The general capital fund balance you can use, you can bring that into the budget to offset some costs. Or you can fund ordinances with general capital fund balance. That number sits at a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So if some of the numbers like for the body cam, for the police car, you know, for the the police department. We can try offsetting some of that with those capital dollars if you'd like to do that. You know, again, it's a non-recurring revenue stream, so my, anytime you have a non-recurring expense. You know, offset it with an recurring revenue. So what I'm looking at here. Um, you know, you could, the claw bucket, the body cam equipment, you know, those two numbers right there, there's a tax point right there. If we brought in fifty seven thousand from general cap. So we can just pull, but also they're going to. Be compliant.
You broke up there, John. You're breaking up, John.
I just, uh, I would bring fifty seven thousand in to cover that expense right there from general capital fund balance. And that'll cut off a penny, you know, before we even get off the call.
Yeah.
I wouldn't use that, you know, bring the whole thing in just to reduce the tax rate because again, it's non-recurring. We don't want you to to use non-recurring money just to offset the taxes.
Right, I I got a question for you. I know we've done this in the past and I know we don't want to do this, but this is kind of a special year because of COVID. And I I don't think, we don't want to hit the taxpayers with the large increase. What about the deferred tax?
You are well within your ability to do that. I'll tell you where your numbers are. With the deferred school tax, you can go up to. Five point six million. You are currently deferred at three point three million. So we could take it up theoretically, we could take it up two point three million. And increase your surplus that way. I wouldn't recommend taking it up two point three million, but if you needed to squeeze out another point or two. Uh, it's an option.
Didn't we just take that down last year? Weren't we trying to reduce that?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. We decided we really didn't want to go down that route. Yes, that that's true, Lillian. We didn't really want to go down that route. We didn't want to hit that fund anymore, but that was before COVID, you know, so I don't know, just an option. We don't have to do anything, but.
One of the things that gave me. One of the things that gave me, I, I got some hope this year, you know, that you had a good year because you recovered your surplus without using the deferred school tax, right? We had always been using that as a crutch to, to use it for roads and to use it to help, you know, bring back your surplus. This was the year where we came in with a pretty strong fund balance and we didn't even have to touch it. So that's a good thing. You're, you're trending positively. But there is a hole to fill here in the budget this year and it starts with the cuts and then we go from there, you know, so. If, if you find me, I, I don't know what you're comfortable with as far as a tax increase goes, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll do what we have to do to make it all work.
Yeah, I don't wanna look at that right now if we don't have to. I, I wanna keep that out of it.
Yeah, I hear you. I, I, I hear you too. I, I, that's why I didn't wanna bring it up. It's like a bad word to me anymore, but I, I do understand Frank's point. It's a, it's, it's an odd year. It's a strange year with. Yeah, I'm not saying we should do it, but it's. Calling it unprecedented times, isn't that the key word?
Right.
I, I think we go, like Lily said, we go, we look at trying to do whatever we can to cut.
Yeah.
Get down. And then at that point, if we say, there's nothing else we could cut and it's still too high, it's just something to consider. Yeah, well, I think we gotta really cut and get down close. I mean, like you said, if it, if it's to knock off a penny or something, obviously, I, you know, I'd be okay, but there's no way I'm gonna, I, I, I'm willing to go there for a couple cents or whatever, so. Got it, that's fine. Okay, okay, I'll make a motion. We open public comment. Anybody want a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think there's anybody on, Frank, but. No, I don't see anybody on. For formality purposes.
Uh, Bob, I got one thing and I didn't see in there, are we allotting anything for road improvements this year? I know we got the grant for the Rickline Hill section two, that's showing the grant money. I think we got, we're responsible for five for ten percent. I don't know what the percentage is for that. But I didn't see anything in here for road improvements. Or if we're even going that, we, we gotta come up with that five percent or ten percent.
Let's hold that thought for a minute. There's nobody on for public, right, Frank? Right. I'll make a motion. We close public comment.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to Joe, cause Joe's running up public comment.
Right, Joe, I see here on page two of our budget worksheet, road repairs and maintenance, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety.
Okay.
Uh.
I didn't say it, all right.
And, and, and actually, but I don't, S and W. No, I think that was for, I think that's salaries and wages, never mind. Yeah, you're right. There's nothing here for that other than.
Yeah, that was, that was under cap.
Yeah.
That was cap fund and stuff.
Yeah.
Going in the past, cause, uh, I think last year we had to have three hundred and some because it included our share for the, uh, the other half of the roads and the water project up in the Pay Center development. And there's three state grant roads, our share for the finished Dumont, Washington Street and the first section, I call it Rickline Road, not Rickline Hill, and Rickline Hill on the other side of fifty-seven.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything budgeted here.
Yeah, that was, I had a proposal sheet in for that too.
Yeah.
I didn't get it into the priority list. I thought it was already a line item in there.
I, I do remember, I just gotta find it.
Well, i- if it's a number, we can get it, John, for next time, I guess.
Yeah. I just wanna, I, I did a couple of numbers real quick while we were, uh, you guys were going through that. If we take the surplus up to what I would suggest is the limit, which is five hundred eighty thousand. And you make the cuts of a hundred and thirteen thousand within the inside cap, that brings you down to a three point eight cent increase. So those two things alone, that'll be your starting point going into next week, but then if we add capital to it, you know, we are, I, I did do the DOT grant for Richline Rose section two. So, and I don't have a, a local portion of that, so that, that does need to get in there. If we have the grant in there, we have to put the, the matching side of, for the municipal in there. That's the only one that I don't have here right now.
Yeah.
And John, that would just be for the engineering, please?
Excuse me, two people talking at once.
The R matching responsibility, isn't that twenty-five percent?
I, I don't know. I thought it was five or ten percent. Mike has that figure.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's just covering the, uh, engineering for it, right, John?
Yes, I, I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, well, can we get that number by next week?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, Lisa, thanks for everything, uh, and everything that John doing the past week. I know you've been, everybody's been sending it to you. Thanks for forwarding it to. With that, I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Can I add one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna try sharing yet another screen here. I, this email went out to everybody as well. Um, let's see. Uh, that was a call. There it is. Okay. You asked me last time about a new municipal building and what it would look like if you went out and bonded for, for debt. Uh, I don't know if you wanna just take a look at this in your time. Uh, it's a four-page document that I sent out and of course, it's the right one. Hold on a second. Sorry about that, guys and girls. Uh, debt issues. This is just what it would look like if you went out and borrowed. I gave you your payment plan and I'm trying to share the screen now. So the, the first exhibit on here is your projected debt payoff of your existing debt only. And this is how we're taking it out over the next several years. You know, I, I think you personally, you're in a, a pretty good position debt-wise because, you know, your, your temporary debt maybe two point three million, but there is a plan in place that you have to pay that off over the next seven years. Um, and it's in there and you can see, I, I'll hit you with this stuff right here. You can see your, your debt services level. As far, as long as there's no new debt added, you're going from five forty-five and you're, you came up in twenty twenty-two here where it actually came down to four ninety-five. So you can see that it's consistently being paid off over the years without any major increases to your tax base, right? Once the number's built in, we're good to go. But if you wanted to take this temporary debt with the, with Thomas Stewart Park out, we wanna leave that one because we're paying it through the, um, through the open space. If you took that temporary debt and you turned it into permanent financing, which is a serial bond, uh, and you added the building with it, I gave you a projection of five million at two percent over twenty years. You know, again, this is all rough and there's variables. Uh, in talking to John Drakowitz, he said that buildings have a twenty to thirty-year life depending upon how they're built and all that. Um, but if you combine that with the equipment that you would be permanently financing as well, you have to take in their estimated lives. So I'm thinking around twenty years is where it would come in. And at five million over twenty years, I gave you exhibit four here, and this'll show you your debt service now with your, uh, with your payback if you went to that bond, you know, because you get rid of all the temporary debt at the bottom with the exception of the Thomas Stewart Park. And now you just have two serial bonds that you're paying off and that serial bond debt would replace your, uh, your payments from your bond anticipation notes and it would roughly be around the same. You would, you wouldn't have a principal payment in twenty twenty-two if that's when you did this bond. And then, but then twenty twenty-three would come back and you would be at five thirty-five and right now you're at four ninety-one. Okay, so you're paying debt down of four ninety-one a year. If you went out for a twenty-year bond for this, by twenty twenty-three, you'd be up to five thirty-five. And that would be kinda your peak, right? Because you could see the bond payments coming down year after year. Now, this assumes a lot of things. This assumes twenty years. This assumes a two percent interest rate, which is an unrealistic right now. That's pretty, interest rates are still really low. And the whole idea with bonding now is to lock into those rates because they're, they're going up at some point. Um, so I think, you know, w- we talked with the financial services guys and we're looking at a two-year window before we think things are gonna start going the other way. Um, so I just ran the numbers. If you said, hey, five million's too much, we don't need that much, you know, we only need four. Well, that's great, but this model shows you wouldn't, you'd be at five million, right? So now you know that the highest payment would be five thirty-five. Uh, and this year it's four ninety-one. So if you took, it took you down a million dollars, this bottom line number here would be reduced going forward. So I gave you five million for the high side, uh, but if it came in lower, obviously your payments will be lower. I did give you my assumptions on exhibit three, so you can, everything, uh, see if you have an understanding of it. Ask you the questions next time I'm able to meet with you and we can go from there. So I just wanted to let you know you had it and, um, you know, see what you're gonna do. The, the spread between the two, if I, I put in the five million, that means we would be doing one point four million of the existing debt that instead of rolling it year after year and paying it off in ten years, one point four million of that debt is in, which leaves you with three point five of new debt and that would be the cost for your building. Uh, and whatever else, you know, if your building was only two point four million, that's where we would take it from. We would take that number down. Um, and, and work with the new numbers at that point.
Okay, good, thanks, Frank.
So it's just something to look at and consider going forward, uh, and seeing how it would impact your debt overall.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? See everyone next Saturday at eight?
Yes.
Okay, have a good weekend. Enjoy, everybody. Oh, uh, we do, we. Motion, right? We need a motion? Yeah, we actually need a motion to adjourn, yeah. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Now, have a good weekend.